Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by founder of Get Oiling Greg Killwine. Hey Greg.
Hello everyone. We're so glad you're here today.
We are also joined by the incomparable Julie from our team. Hey Julie, how's it going?
Hello.
We're so thrilled to have you guys here today. Let us know where in the world you are. We're excited to see you here and talk about today's topic, which is creating PDF lead magnets. So if you don't know what a lead magnet is, don't worry, we're going to cover that briefly. We'll talk about what this will do for your business and then most importantly, how you can actually get this done. If you are creatively oriented, creatively minded, you actually might enjoy this a great deal. If you find yourself in a position where you're like, I just don't want to do this. Know that at any point, we actually have a team who specializes in doing stuff, just like what we are going to be sharing today. And so I'll be talking with you about how you could take advantage of that on this call as well. If you're new here, welcome. We're here every single Thursday at noon Eastern time. This is a call that is open to all Young Living Brand Partners. And of course, we are Get Oiling. We are a one stop shop for everything that you need to run, grow and manage your Young Living Brand Partner business. And with that, we're going to get into today's content. So don't be shy, head on over into the chat. Let everybody know where you're from and what you're excited to learn today. I'm going to go ahead, we're going to pop out a video here with the team and then we're going to get into some slides. And then of course, at the close, we'll come back out, join you guys for some Q and A. And of course, get into some hands-on work. So welcome. Looks like we've got Phoenix, Fargo, Florida, New York City, Upper Peninsula of Michigan, the Netherlands. Welcome Amy. It's your first time joining live. Excited to have you here. We have Indiana, Kelowna, Canada. So excited you're here. What's up Minnesota? Fantastic. Welcome everybody. All right. So today, and this is going to be a little bit of a series. So we're going to have a number of calls that are focused around this topic of lead generation. So what we're focusing on are giveaways that get new customers. And today, the giveaway that we are going to create is a PDF lead magnet. A PDF is, it's like a document that you can download that's not editable, right? We all know what a PDF is, right? You can get into some very, very basic, it's just a file type. If you've ever downloaded an ebook, that's usually a PDF, right? If you've downloaded a guide or sometimes a presentation is something that's not editable, it's usually a PDF. Okay? So today, we're going to talk about how we can create one of these, even if you've never done anything like this before, using Get Oiling and Canva. So what we'll get into today are what lead magnets are and what is in them. We'll talk about how to create a great lead magnet with Canva. And by the way, Canva is a free or paid tool. It is not included with Get Oiling, although we do have a Canva button, where if you are logged into your Canva account, you can easily access assets from inside of your Canva account while you're logged into Get Oiling, leaving you from having to, you know, dance around in a bunch of tabs, which is really convenient. So it is a third party tool that we're going to be using today. And then of course, we're going to talk about how we can upload and use the lead magnet that we create in Get Oiling. Then we'll get into some live help and Q and A. So if you came here today looking for help, this call is for you, regardless of whether your question has anything to do with today's topic. We are here to help. You have the founder and creator of the software here, as well as Julie from our team to help. They're in the comments, they're in the chat. So if you have questions and you need help with something, add that to the Q and A. And if it's something that really needs a hands-on talk through or walkthrough, we can actually save space to work on that together at the close of today's call. So don't be shy. We don't want you stuck. We want you moving forward. So make sure you add any questions to the Q and A. And if you're watching this as a replay in the future, you can go to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession to get the link to join our live Zoom calls. We're doing this every week for you to help you grow in your business. And we hope you'll join us on an upcoming live session. And if you'd like one-on-one help on a call like this one, you can actually schedule some time aside on one of these live sessions we host every week by going to getoiling.com/websitereview. You do not have to have a website up and functioning for you to take advantage of this. Even if you're just getting started with Get Oiling and you're trying to figure out where your feet go next. This is a live, free opportunity for you to get coaching, strategy and advice on how to move ahead using software to support your young living business. And if you want a hand getting things done, if you're just throwing your hands up in the air and you're like, you know what? I've been trying this and I would kind of like somebody to do this stuff for me. Go to getoiling.com/conceiers. You can learn more about our incredible team who can help you get things done. All right. So let me see in the chat, let me know yes in the chat. Do you currently have a lead magnet that you offer on your website? Is there some free thing that you're giving away in exchange for someone's contact info? Seeing some yeses, some no's, some not yet. Okay, okay, great. Oh, and the, the question there for that one-on-one, you can go to getoiling.com/websitereview, all one word. And you can sign up for a dedicated space on a call like this one on a future Thursday. All right. So we've got a bunch of folks. Okay. We're trying to figure out what we can do. Haven't gotten this far yet. Yes. Try to switch it up three to four times a year. Fantastic. Okay. All right. So today we're going to get into this. So first, for those of you who are maybe not familiar, let's talk about what a lead magnet is. It is quite literally in some ways what it sounds like. It is a, just like a magnet attracts metal. A lead magnet should be an attractor for your ideal future Young Living customer, right? And so what this entails is creating some kind of free valuable resource that is given to someone in exchange for their contact information, permission for you to be in touch with them on an ongoing basis. Because they want, they need to become your lead for your business, right? And they don't actually become your lead until they have indicated that they're interested in what you do. And having a lead magnet that you offer on your website is a really great, easy and passive way to collect these names, this information from these people, right? So think of it kind of like if you've ever done an in-person event, maybe you've done a trade show, you've done a vendor event, or something to that effect. If you've collected names and emails or names and numbers from those events, this is just like doing that, except it happens passively 24/7/365. Anybody that uses your business card and goes to your website or goes, you know, clicks the link in your bio and social media, goes to your website, they can get on your mailing list. They can become a lead in your Good Oiling system when they say yes to getting this thing that you offer. All right? And another thing, and this is really important, we want to set ourselves apart. There are millions and millions of Young Living Brand Partners across the world. We want to position you as a professional with your own perspective, as a credible authority on what you know, who is capable of helping the person you want to share Young Living with, to solve the problems they know they have. So again, it's something that's offered on your website and this can be done via a page or a landing page. And then once somebody puts their name and email in to receive this, it is delivered to them automatically via a campaign after they sign up on that page or landing page. So here's an example of what this can look like. This is a template that comes from the Brand My Business Workshop. This is where you can see up at the top, I have it circled. It says, get your free guide, Five Steps to Healthier Living. This is a homepage where the lead magnet is being offered right up at the top. Okay? And when someone clicks the click here button, you can see that we are offering a guide called Five Steps to Healthier Living. And so when they put their name, email and phone here, they can receive this Five Steps to Healthier Living Guide. And then of course, if you note the copy that is written here, we're also letting them know they're signing up for a regular newsletter. So this is one example of what a PDF lead magnet might look like. Now they're not getting it here on this page. When they put in their name and email, they're going to go to a next page that says, check your email. And then in the email that sends out automatically from your Get Oiling system, they're going to be able to click and open this download. Okay? So let's talk about what is in a lead magnet. It's pretty simple. First, we got to have information that helps them to learn or do something that they want to know or do, or to solve a problem that they know that they currently have, right? We also need to give a little bit of context here, because the purpose of this isn't just to give something away, but to give something away so that you can begin building a relationship with somebody. So we need to give a little bit of context in our lead magnet about who we are and who we help. And then what they can do with this information, right? We need to expose a gap where we can say, you've gotten this far. I'm so proud of you. Would you like to go the rest of the way on this journey? Here's what you can do next, right? And this is where you might offer a call, or you might offer a link to a page that maybe sells something, right? Maybe it has starter bundles for Young Living, right? Whatever that might be, we need to have context to the information so that we can share and show that this is what we are about. This is what we do. You are who I help, right? And then here's what you can do next. Pretty simple. All right. So with lead magnets, what we're doing is paying it forward for the people that we know we want to serve. Because building a following who trusts you is a long-term strategy. And if we do it right, it can have a huge payoff for your brand partner business. Having tools like this that passively function to build credibility and trust with the people that you ultimately would like to be your customers is something that if you're not focused on it yet, you want to start doing it now. Because it becomes a snowball for you long-term in your business. Really making a point of passively putting things in place that work on your behalf, without you having to be out there hustling 24/7, right? This is out there working for you 24/7. So having something that you can offer in exchange for the opportunity to build trust with people is one of the most important first steps you can take to creating that passive phenomenon of building, an audience building, a following and building trust with people who might not even know you yet, who will eventually become your customers. So let's talk about how we're going to get this done. We've got an order of operations here. Love making sure that we are clear on the flow of how we work, because we want to get the outcome that we want without spending an inordinate amount of time. So we're going to get this done here on this call today. So the first thing that we're going to do is identify a problem that we're going to help someone that you want to help solve right now. And we need to keep it relevant and actionable. Let me know in the chat, what is a problem that you want to help your ideal person solve right now? Let's put this into the chat. I will create a lead magnet with you here today with your example. What is a problem that you want to help somebody solve? So when we think through this, remember that what we're trying to do is not write a novel, right? We are trying to help somebody do something that they maybe haven't quite figured out yet. There are lots of things that we can do, right? But not everything that we need to do. Bridget says detoxifying their home. Awesome. That's a great idea. Let's think a little bit as well about maybe drilling that down just a little bit more, right? Is that detoxifying their home? Who's the person that this is for? Families that need support with ADHD in a compliant way. That's interesting. Improving hydration. Okay, who is this for, right? How to improve, Jamie, let's go with you. Improving hydration. Who are we helping to improve hydration? And how do they know that they are struggling with hydration? And keep it going. If you've already shared here in the chat, Bridget, detoxifying their home. Who is this for and how do they know it's a problem for them? People who don't like water, people who are active in the hot summer months. Okay, excellent, excellent. So keep it coming, you guys. Keep it coming. You could do this for gut health. That's right. Eating healthier to feel better. Yes. Fantastic. Moms with teenage kids that are tired of the fake fragrance stuff. Okay. Is she someone who gets headaches when there's fake fragrance? Like was she told by somebody? Does she already know that the fake fragrances are a problem, right? It's really important when we first start thinking about this, that we know that we're going to eventually lead them to oils. We know that we're eventually going to leave them to Young Living product. But there's a pretty solid chance that where your person is right now, they don't know half of what you do, a quarter of what you do about toxins in the home, for instance, right? So if we want to make sure that we're coming from a place of a problem that they're aware of right now. What are, like, what's the problem that they are aware of, right? I like this ditch and switch on a budget, but can we contextualize that, right? Does she already know that she needs to ditch the products that she has? If she is, and if budget is the focus here, for, for instance, Tanya. Maybe this is a thrifty guide for the crunchy girl for, you know, for greening the home, right? Bridget says she knows they have a problem, doesn't know what else to get rid of. Teenage sports smell in her car in the kids' bedrooms. Awesome. Okay. All right. So Tanya, there we go. How about you? You want to run with that? Let's do this. Okay. So this is a thrifty guide for the crunchy girl who wants to green her home. Let's do that because she knows that she is budget-minded. She knows that she wants to be greener. She wants to do better, right? But she believes that she has to do it in an expensive way, because that's what everybody seems to be selling is stuff that's really expensive, right? Okay. So the first thing that we're going to do is outline or write out what you're going to share, right? And we'll, we'll stick with this, this crunchy girl thrifty guide, right? We're going to outline what we know we want to cover, remembering that we need to, we need to deliver actionable steps to her. We need to position our credibility and, and then of course, let her know what the next steps are, right? Okay. So, and remember, we can use AI for this and I'll show you that here in just a moment. Then we're going to design a flyer format. This could be a US letter format. And you actually could do this, you know, it could be, most commonly it's in vertical orientation, but you could absolutely do this if you're using like a chart and something like that. You could use other formats for this, but especially if it's something that you might encourage them to print, just make sure that you've got this in A4 or US settings. Okay? And then once we're done with it, we're going to upload it in PDF format to Get Oiling. There's several ways to get this done. And then we will add this document, this file to our funnel's campaign so that it delivers automatically. All right. So let's go make this. I'm excited about this. I hope you guys are too. I'm going to switch my share over to Get Oiling and we're going to go and hit up AI for some help here, right? So we're going to write with AI and we're going to say, write a guide greater than 1,000 words. We do want to put some real value into this that helps a frugally minded woman go green in her home by swapping out toxic products for natural ones. Right? The guide will be titled Crunchy on a Budget, A Thrifty Girl's Guide to Greening a Home. How about that? Okay. And then we'll also say, write this in a fun, quirky tone. And have a call to action at the end that encourages them to, the reader, to reach out to me for a complimentary consult, right? So we got really specific here. Remember with AI, you've got to be really specific. And if you don't love what it gives you, then of course, you can reword your original request and you can go in and, and have it rewrite for you. So here we go. Are you a frugally minded woman? Okay. I love this, but whatever, we'll work with this. Do you want to swap out toxic products? Okay. So I'm going to copy all of this. Beautiful. Or you could also hit copy to clipboard. One thing that I might choose to do here, if this is you, I would actually highly encourage that you do this before we go get into Canva. I'm going to switch my share over to a a Word document. In this case, I'm using Pages because I'm on Mac. Give it just a second. It's taking a moment to open up here. Here we go. All right. So what I'm going to do, and whether you're writing this on your own or you have used AI to write this, you want to make sure that you're clear on what you want before you get started, right? So I put, I pasted everything in here, right? So you will say a crunchy girl or a crunchy mama looking to go green. Do you want to swap out toxic products? So, so here you go. This is, we're going to go with what's here, but let's just pretend that you have gone through and you've modified this just to make sure that this really sounds like you. And then another thing that you want to do is right here. So are you a crunchy mama looking to go green in your home? Do you want to swap out toxic products for natural ones, but feel you can't afford it? Well, fear not my fellow thrifty girl, because I've got you covered. I'm, right? And so you're going to want to put your name in here. So here's Jane. A mom of three, right? And we're going to put some more information in here about Jane. So we're a mom of three, two teenage boys and a tween girl who loves, and what do you love? So I love knitting, yoga and, and podcasts. I've been on my crunchy journey for 12 years now. And I've, let's see, and I help moms like you figure this stuff out without breaking the bank. There we go. So make sure that you do insert a little something about yourself here, right? This is who I am and who I help, right? And then down here at the bottom, there you have it, my thrifty friends, a few easy and affordable ways to green your home. And if you're feeling overwhelmed or not sure how to start, I'm here to help. Reach out to me for a complimentary consult. Let's get to work together to make your home an eco-friendly oasis. If you want to change this, if you're offering something, if you want to have them sign up for something else, whatever that might be, if you want to send them to a page where they can sign up for a call with you. This is all something that you can do here, but this is what we're going to work with. All right. So mind you, I've got this here. We are now going to go into Canva and start designing something. So let's go back into, here we go. In Safari, we're in Canva. We're going to create a design. I'm going to type in letter. And that's eight and a half by 11. That's US or A4, basically the same size if you're outside the US. And I'm going to go over here to templates and I'm going to write in a green guide and see what it says. Let's see. I don't necessarily love these. Let me see. I'm going to put in natural green. So those are one page. Okay, let's go back actually, and let's look at different things that we can do here. Here's documents. And you can actually look at different templates here. So this can be a free download. Right? If we type that in, there are free download templates. Lots of great stuff that you can work with here. Let's even explore and see what they say when we put in lead magnet template. Beautiful. How about this? Okay. So these are going to have multi-page options. So let's go ahead and grab one of these that looks great. And again, you can just hold your mouse over and you can actually see, this is perfect. I love this one. Okay, let's use this. We'll customize this template. Note, this is a Canva Pro template that I'm using here. But when you look through, you can see that there are some that are not pro, like this one here is not pro. You don't see the little crown down at the bottom. So if you don't have Canva Pro, I do highly recommend getting Canva Pro. It's very affordable if you're going to be creating resources for your own brand and website and social media. But if you aren't there yet, then you can obviously use whatever they have. So you can see here that we've got a number of different pre-formatted pages that look really nice. I want to show you here that you've got a lot of space to play with. So we do have a thousand words. It's quite a bit to work with, but we want to really deliver a lot of value upfront. So go with the flow here of what they have. And what you may want to do, because again, we do have quite a lot of content to share, is, you know, in some cases you may want to duplicate a page. And then you could even move the elements around a bit. So I'm going to select these and move them over here and then select these and move them here just to give kind of an opposite effect, right? Oops. Let me move him over. There we go. So it can basically create a mirror image of what we did on the, the other one, right? So follow the template as it is, as it's designed. You want to obviously change this to your website address. You can also, you can hyperlink things like this if you want. So what we're going to do is basically go in and if you haven't already created a brand hub in, in your Canva, certainly consider doing that. We're going to use Jane's, oh wow, it applied the whole thing and that is a little too green and yellow for me. What we're going to do here is grab from our elements. We're going to select this one, select the color. And then I'm going to grab from her brand kit, this green, and I want to change the color of this font just to give it a nice contrast. I'm going to make it this sort of light cream color. I'm going to make it bold. And what did we call it? This is the Crunchy on a Budget, A Thrifty Girl's Guide to Greening a Home. So I'm going to copy that over from our document that we have opened in a separate tab. So this is crunchy on a budget. And then here we're going to paste this in. And we see that I don't love the look of that. I'm going to expand this out a bit. There we go. And then center it. Perfect. And this actually looks nice as an image. You could certainly change this. Of course, you want to make sure that you are putting in your information here, swapping this stuff around, right? Just to make sure that it reflects your branding. All right. So now we can actually go in and copy our first couple of paragraphs. And I'm just going to select what's here. And I'm going to paste. And I can add just a little bit more content here. And then down here at the bottom, I've got a little bit of space. Read on to learn more, right? So there we go. And so this will be welcome. We can change this over to one of our colors, right? And you can swap out this image. So what you can do here, I think what's often a really great idea, if you've got a nice picture of you that is fitting for an environment like this. Let's go over to elements and search for woman cleaning, because this is a sort of a green cleaning. We're going to go to photos and see if there is something nice here that we could pull in that we'd like, that would fit, right? So maybe this one, I'm going to drag it over top, right? And you see how it doesn't really fit quite like we'd like. I'm going to hit delete. That's not what we want. And maybe find something that will fit there in that space. So double-click it after you drag it in. And then we'll move this over so that it's inside of it. Perfect. Oh, and that yellow even kind of, well, it's actually, that doesn't quite work. I don't love that yellow there. Let's grab a blue. Perfect. There we go. So here's our first page. And this is our first three, our first three paragraphs actually of our guide that we've created, right? So I'm going to actually remove this and let's go back over here. This says, let's start in the kitchen. And so let's say we'll go to green kitchen. Or we'll say clean kitchen, because I don't want the color green necessarily. So clean kitchen. And we'll just drag this over. Obviously, this isn't the most beautiful aesthetic. You can pick something that you like a little better. If you really want to, oops, you want to keep it with the aesthetic. You can just drag over something that's maybe more reflective, right? So I've got now my next paragraph. So I've got now my next paragraph. So I'm going to copy this. And I'm going to paste my content. I'm going to delete this. And it actually looks like we could go a little bit bigger with our uh, with our image here for using this uh, specific one. Or the specific template here. So this title page, this title page, so uh, let's start in the kitchen, right? What you may find when you're designing a document like this is that you want to maybe add more space. Right? And then you may actually want to include some things that might be helpful here. Um, you know, for for them, maybe you can add some, uh, here are some of my favorite swaps, right? And we can make this a different section. And so actually, what I think I want to do here with this is I want to make this bigger and I'll put it down at the bottom. And I want to move this up. And maybe yeah, we'll kind of move it over just a little bit and what we want to do is just create a section where we can include more content in a pretty way. And so since we are kind of breaking into something different, um, what we'll do here is we'll say, uh, here are a few of my favorite swaps. Right? And we'll make this a s- a bolder font. We will center it. And we'll spread it out just a bit. So what are some favorite swaps? Let's go ahead and add these here. What are some favorite swaps? And and remember, we're being general, right? But what we can do here is we can put in something like, how about this? Alright, so on this side, we're going to say uh, scented candles. And plugins. We're going to say um. Window cleaner. Floor cleaner. What are some other things that we swap out? Laundry detergent. Right? And we're going to copy and paste this and we're going to align it. You see how it aligns together? We're going to center this. And we're going to say premium quality essential oils. And this would be non-toxic. Actually, we can say toxin-free cleaners. Vinegar. Floor cleaner, we could also put in toxin-free cleaners vinegar, right? So you don't have to necessarily, obviously, I'm not going into all of the details here, but um, you would want to go into some real swaps here. And then finally, um. You know, fragrance-free detergent. Now, if you're going to put a section like this in here, let's actually copy and paste this section here. And we're going to send the layer to the back and I'm going to just put this color behind this, just to kind of create a little more space. And then down here. You can put a little blurb, right? If you're making recommendations, you can say, remember, not all essential oils and definitely not all green products are created equal. I specialize in helping moms navigate. Would help to spell that right? This confusing world of starting a green journey. And I'm here to help. Be sure to book a call with me. If you need a hand. Alright, so what you can do here is where we say book a call with me. You can hit Ctrl or Command K. And you can actually pop in your link. So this is where you would go to uh, your website. Right? And you can actually put in a link here. And so this becomes clickable. Alright, so that is our next section, okay? And then you're just going to be repeating this, right? So next, we're moving on to personal care products. I'm going to copy this. I'm going to paste this. And we're going to again introduce some space. And I didn't actually copy all of this. There we go. You could add some swaps in here. Again, you can change this around. And of course, this is titled personal care products. So we will select both of these, give them again, a little bit of space, center them on the page. And you can change this out as well, but let's go over here to uh, self-care. Type in self-care under elements and photos. Let's see, I don't think that that's going to be the one. How about this one? It's nice and tall. Perfect. So that is there. We're good to go on that one. And then we keep it going. So this last one is like a fillable, which we don't actually need. So let's just make a copy of this one. And move it down. And now we're going to go into our decor. So I'm going to select everything here. I'm going to paste in and then create space, right? So just hitting enter a couple of times. And here we go, this will be decor. Obviously, this isn't one that you are probably going to use. Um. Because that's not the um. Here we go, I'm going to drop that in right there. Uh, this is probably not what you're going for as a young living brand partner, but um, uh, topic-wise. But just for the sake of including that here, we'll put that there. And then finally, let's, oops, let's duplicate this one. We'll move it all the way down. And then we've got our final paragraph. So I'm going to copy this. I'm going to paste it in here. Alright, and so some of the things that you can do on this final page would be maybe to include a photo of you. Right? Uh, you could include a little blurb about you. You can include maybe some testimonials from folks who have worked with you, et cetera. Um, but we can also add a button. Right? And then on this button, oops. We can say we'll move this text here and we'll say book your call. Right? Obviously, this isn't the best aesthetic choice, but you can play around with this. And then, of course, finally, you want to make sure we're going to select this. We're going to hit Command K. Oops, sorry, need to group it. And then we'll hit Command K on the text. Can't do that as a group. Okay, do the text, Command K. There we go. And this is where we'll have that link once again to book with you. Alright? So once this is all said and done, you've got a multi-page situation here. It does work in your favor to have um, a depth uh, of what you're sharing. If you can get it all into one page, more power to you. If that's something that you feel is super helpful, sometimes what you're going to be giving away is something that needs to be done so uh, in a more concise fashion. So you have two options here, um, depending on what your document is formatted as. If we do have this formatted into multiple pages, you're going to want to go to share and then you're going to go to download. Make sure the file type is a PDF. I like to use standard because it can get quite large sometimes uh, with the print version. And of course, make sure that you've got it named appropriately. So this is uh, what is it called? Again, this is a thrifty girl's guide to greening a home. Okay, so now we can actually do that download. Make sure that it's named. Grab PDF. And hit download. When in doubt, always make sure that you've got plenty of space. You've got plenty of images. It's going to really pull the eye down and through. And remember to make some kind of a promise there in the beginning, uh, that there is more where this came from. Obviously, giving a little bit of context for why they would want to continue listening to you. Okay? So the next thing we're going to do, and I did just download this to my device, okay? Um, now what we're going to do next is we're going to go into our get oiling. And uh, you've got a couple of options here. The easiest thing to do, if you have a multi-page PDF, is to go over here to your file manager, videos and videos, images and files, click files. And then let's go find that file. So that should be it right here, Thrifty Girl's Guide, click upload. And then, of course, you'll be able to find it right here once that is done uploading. Now, if you have a one-page guide, you also have a the really cool ability to, maybe if you're in your campaigns and you want to add your download, which is the final step here. Um, we're going to go here. So this is, you know, maybe the the campaign that you've written to deliver your freebie and follow up with somebody that has taken advantage of it. You've got two options. Uh, number one is what we've just done. We've uploaded our multi-page PDF to our file section. If you haven't done that, you can also uh, put your cursor where you'd like for the file to show up and you can head over here to more rich. And you can upload a file directly. You can insert or manage a file that you have already included. So here is, here's that, right? Just done that here. Uh, and then finally, if you have a one-page guide, you can go to this Canva button. And then you can go to um, over here to PDF download. And this, we will have to give the name again. Uh, this is the uh, thrifty girls guide to greening a home. We'll open Canva. You do have to allow your cookies. And then what you should be able to do is to actually go into your existing projects. Which is right here. And then again, if you have a one-page PDF, then you can click and select your page. And send it to get oiling. Now, again, if you have a multi-page PDF, Canva doesn't have that integration uh, able uh, for for us to use. It's not something that's there for us to use. Uh, but there is uh, if you have a one pager, then that is of course something that um, that you can use that Canva button for, okay? So again, if it's already in your files, you can go to insert and manage files and you can find those here. And then delete that one. Uh, but uh, but yeah, that's that's how you're going to get that added to your campaign so that it delivers. So I hope that that was helpful to you. I know I'm not the absolute best in Canva and that was uh, you know, really supposed to be fairly quick. Um, but if you have your presets in Canva, your brand presets, and this is part of the benefit, if you actually watch the training uh, with uh, two of our designers from a couple of weeks ago, uh, you'll see them talk quite a bit about having sort of these colors and fonts in place and having those set up in your Canva, because it's going to save you a lot of time. Uh, you can actually apply with one click your entire brand palette uh, to a template like we did today. Um, but just make sure, starting out, before you decide to create a free thing to give away, that you understand that we want to come from the perspective of someone who understands what they're thinking and looking for right now. We know what we want them to know, what we want them to know, right? We want them to know what we know. But in order for them to be open to knowing what we know, we got to meet them where they are with their understanding, right? So if she's interested in green and she's on a budget, then do what we just did today. Show her some ways that she can start using baking soda and vinegar and essential oils. But by the way, don't just use any essential oil off of Amazon, right? Put that in into the actual verbiage there and tell her you've got a better way, right? So there's um, a lot of ways that we can go about doing this. So um, thank you, Greg, for linking that there. Do we have any, do you have any questions in the Q and A? Um, let me scroll through here in the chat. If you are looking for maybe some feedback and help with your lead magnet idea. Um, I see Bridget, you have your hand up. Let me know in the chat here. Do you want to come out and chat about your idea? And we can kind of think through what that looks like. Uh, and of course, everyone here is welcome to do that. If if you are trying to figure out the perspective that you can uh, approach this from, that might be most effective uh, to getting someone's attention. You want a little help with your title. I do this kind of stuff off the cuff all the time. Uh, so if you want uh, some eyes and ears on what you're working on, uh, you're welcome to just pop your hand up here live on Zoom and we can work through that together. No worries, no worries. Okay, um, Angie says, remember, look at the background of those photos, possibly a cleaning supply is not clean. Uh, better to make your own with these. Yes, and uh, and by the way, um, there are some phenomenal stock photos that include Young Living products that you can get. Um, those are out there. Uh, we um, we definitely recommend that you check those out, but the the here's the thing, here's the thing. You want to make sure that you are in your lead magnet, right? These are people you haven't introduced to Young Living yet. You want to make sure that you aren't getting too heavy on product placement. Right? We want to kind of keep this neutral and make this look and feel like a world that they currently exist in or that they know they want to exist in. They don't know that they want a life that is full of Young Living product yet. And so if we push that too far to to the front, that could be perceived as pushing a sale, right? And that's not going to really go the distance to build trust. So go neutral as often as possible, evoking with images the idea of what you want to share. Um, when you start getting closer to tools that are introducing a product, so maybe for instance, you create a PDF like we shared today, but maybe at the end of it, we say, I have a free class that will teach you how to da-da-da, and the link that they click instead of booking a call with you, maybe it goes to another place where they can opt in. And they can maybe receive some of that really beautiful stock photo imagery or pictures of you with product that teaches them how using Young Living products specifically uh, can make this difference for them. What we're doing with the lead magnet is really getting them open to opening the door. And then once they're ready to really start walking down that hallway, Young Living is behind another door. We've got to build trust for them to want to walk down that hallway, right? Uh, so just make sure that we aren't getting too um, too forward, too out there uh, with the product references and with Young Living stuff just yet. Remember, this is a long game. Our goal is to build a huge list of people who like us, who trust us, who want to hear what we have to say. And if we jump the gun too quickly there and we start putting what we're selling out there before we start helping them solve their problems and building trust, we are missing the opportunity to actually cultivate that relationship that turns into a dedicated customer for a long period of time. Does that make sense? So really make sure that we aren't draw- drawing a straight line between I'm giving something away and I'm showing someone product. It really needs to meet them where they are today. Alright, Adrian, you want me, do you want to come out and chat? Let me know in the chat, just give me a yes or no. Pop and see your hand up. Just want to make sure. Awesome. Welcome. Can you hear me? You may want to check your audio input, because I cannot hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, hi.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Thank you so much. So you make it look so easy.
Thanks. It's uh, yeah. Design isn't my thing.
Well, it it, you got it done in like less than an hour, so that's good. Um, so question, and I want to expand on my lead magnet that I have. So I have a yoga mat spray lead magnet. I have, well, I have a couple of things. I have a free meditation, I have a um, yoga mat spray lead magnets. So that one I would like to expand more. Right now, the lead magnet goes to a PDF that shows how to create a yoga mat spray and it uses generic essential oils. I I forget, I think like orange tea tree, something like that. Doesn't use any of the um, blends like thieves, example purification, which would be, you know, more ideal. So keeping it generic, keeping it neutral. And then the actual ending goes to a Facebook group where um, I was doing regular lives. I was doing regular lives to share about essential oils, but I kind of run out of topics to share because it's you know, it's kind of like the same thing, meditation or opening the heart center, some chakras and oils with that, and also keeping it very neutral. So I want to go to the next step. Like, I'm not sure what that would be. Would that be, you know, a call to me or maybe I need another lead magnet, another guy that has more information.
Got you. So there's a little bit, so there's some nuance in when and where you might start introducing Young Living as a topic. Because of the way you've branded yourself, you're very yoga-forward. Everything that you have here is very yoga-forward. You do mention, uh, essential oils and, and you do actually mention Young Living here, but it's all in context, right? Um, and you've got essential oil education. So in here, if someone reads through what's on your website, they make it down here and they want this. There's not a problem per se with, um, with actually including links to Young Living. Right? Um, because of where you're, you're positioning this, right? There's so much that you're offering that's free. Basically, you aren't just, you're not making yourself a banner for Young Living. And, um, and you actually have, I think, a great deal of, um, of non-Young Living content here that people can relate to before understanding what Young Living even is, right? Uh, and so if somebody comes here, um, you know, and they want to learn about, uh, taking care of their yoga mat, uh, then what you can do is, um, in this, i- in the lead magnet itself, talk about the actual like problem with maybe not having your yoga mat cleaned regularly. And then maybe what some of the downfalls are to using commercial cleaners on a yoga mat. And then, of course, you can get to at the end, again, like we've delivered a lot of value. And then at the end, you can say, here's what I recommend, here's what I use. And at that point, I think it's perfectly acceptable to say, I use this oil, this oil, this oil, and then, oh, by the way, at the bottom, right? Oh, by the way, I use Young Living essential oils. Here's why. If that's something you're interested in learning more about, here's where you can go. Right? And that could be to, to, you know, click and, and book a call with you or, or to go wherever. So you don't necessarily have to gate completely. You just want to make sure that it doesn't feel like exposing them to Young Living is the only reason why you're creating that content. And the angle that you have here with keeping your mat clean and using, um, you know, chemical-free sprays that are healthy for you and the mat and your practice. Um, I think that that's enough substance to be able to then at the end say, hey, by the way, I do use these and I will get a commission if you buy these. If you'd like to learn more about them, I do consults. Here you go. I think that would actually be perfectly fine in context here with what you've put together. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it does. And I used to have the yoga mat spray on the top. I recently put the, uh, meditation up at top. Um, so I'm, you know, may switch it back. I'm not sure. You know, I'm kind of like playing with it. I'm trying to see what's going to draw people more.
Uh, losing your audio here.
Oh, sorry about that.
There you are.
Yeah, my headset for some reason wasn't working, so this was.
Sure, sure, sure.
So, um, and sometimes it works better with the headset for me. Um, anyway, can you hear me now? Yeah, okay. So what I had before, I used to have the yoga mat spray on the top. And I changed it recently to access the free meditation. I'm trying to see what is going to, you know, work best for people as a lead. So I'm just playing with it right now.
Yeah.
So I don't know, uh, part of me thinks I need to draw it back because I wanted to just kind of, you know, what's going to bring people, you know, to my site more because I have that as a lead on my link tree, which I want to change the link pages anyway in social media too.
Yeah. So I mean, I think what, what you put here, you'll, obviously over time, you'll see what gets more response if you're actually measuring for periods of time. But I think it's also really important to consider how you're getting them to your, your website in the first place. Typically, a website is going to see more traffic on pages that are not the homepage. Um, i- if you're, let's just say, for instance, you're creating content on social media, uh, then more often than not, people are going to click the link that goes to the, the link page, right? For instance, that might have free thing A or free thing B that they could then click, right? Um, or if you are blogging and creating content, then more often than not, people are going to be landing on a blog post, right? And then they may make their way over to the homepage of your site. Uh, so I would, I would actually, in, in playing around with what goes on your homepage, I wouldn't worry about that quite as much as, um, how you're positioning it, uh, or your offers based on where people are coming from, right? So if you are on Instagram, for instance, then you want to be really focusing on that link in bio page and how you're talking about what's there to send people to those resources.
That's perfect. And one last question. Um, so I was, I've been thinking about getting back to blogging. And, um, when I set up the changes for the website, we took the blog off because it was just the, you know, the, um, I didn't have it customized with Get Oiling. Yeah, it was on my other site. So how would I add a blog feature now?
Yeah, so all you would need to do is just to go to, go to blog uh, and have like blog posts. You actually have, I think these are all drafts.
I have some older ones, but it's not showing on my, um.
Oh, and your menu?
Yeah, my menu. How do I get that on the menu basis?
Yeah, yeah. So what, what I might consider doing, because, um, there is quite a lot here that can get compromised, I think, as let's say, if you're on like, um, you know, if we've got a smaller screen, for instance, uh, it can start getting kind of crowded. So what I would consider doing is, um, maybe making some of these dropdown menus like this, right? So, um, maybe under learn, you could have learn, uh, and then, or free stuff, or, uh, I don't know what, what does breathing room fall into?
Some free meditation, short meditation. So I, I, you know, I agree, you know, that is free stuff for sure.
Yeah, so, so you could have a page that says resources and one could link to the breathing room page. It could link in a dropdown, right? So you could have breathing room, resources, blog, right? You could have blog up here as well if you wanted to, if you really wanted to feature it that way. Um, if you are blogging on a dedicated basis and people are arriving at your website because they're reading blog posts, then it would be helpful uh, to have blog up here as a top level menu item. But until then, you can just have learn or resources and that would allow you to, uh, have a page uh, that would link to, or, or a dropdown menu that would link to free thing one, free thing two, blog, breathing room, et cetera.
That's perfect. That sounds good.
Awesome. Yeah, thanks for coming out. So appreciate that. And remember, everyone, you are always welcome to raise your hand and ask if we've got space to do it. We'll bring you out. Having, uh, you walk through and kind of learn this stuff is beneficial to everyone who is here and everyone who's on their journey. So thank you for being a part of that and being open to help and create that experience for others. It is, uh, getting close to the top of the hour here. Uh, we will be back same time next week. And of course, in the meantime, we are here for you. Support at getoiling.com. If you run into any snags or issues, make sure that you're checking out our help center. Uh, it is, it's recently gotten a gorgeous facelift, thanks to our friend Colin. And, uh, and you can find all kinds of answers to questions that you're looking for quickly and easy. Obviously, there are great in-depth resources on our YouTube channel, but sometimes you just need a quick answer and I can be a little long-winded, guys. So make sure that you're heading over there and learning. And of course, we'll be back here same time next week. Have a great week, everybody.